Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. And everybody, it was amazing. You all quieted down right at seven. I said to Ms. DuPont, is it seven? It was seven, so thank you. So, thank you for joining us here in the council chamber. We do have several guests. We have some public speakers. And so before I call the meeting to order, I will just walk us through the agenda just so that we are all sort of on the same page about what we have before us this evening. And I will, as always, extend an extra word of thanks to Kim in the BevCam booth for making sure that we're streaming and we're live and that folks can be following along, even if you couldn't join us here in the council chamber. Thank you, Kim. Thanks to the team at BevCam for that. So this evening, as I mentioned, we do have some guests here in the chamber with us. We're going to start with a resolution that Councilor St. Hilaire has put together celebrating a milestone birthday for a resident of Beverly. And then we do have guests from the Beverly Little League. We've got Beverly Little League coaches, families, board members, and most importantly, players here with us. And so we've got something to take up concerning Beverly Little League, and so we're happy to have all of you here with us. We have two members of the public who have signed up to speak, and so we'll take those as we can come to them in the agenda. And thank you to those members of the public, and thanks for your patience in advance. We have to juggle things a little bit with the order. We have two public hearings that are posted for 7:30 and 7:40. We'll need to take those at the times that they are posted. Mayor Cahill and his team will not be presenting this evening. I'll say more about that once I call the meeting to order to explain why. And then we've got some routine business to take up, and we'll take a brief break for some subcommittee work, come back and finish it all up. And for those who are avid fans of the city council, you may note that it's not our city clerk. Lisa Kent, sitting beside me, is our assistant clerk, Katie DuPont. Thank you, Ms. DuPont, for being here. Ms. Kent is unfortunately under the weather, but we are in good hands with Ms. DuPont, so thank you. So with that, I'll officially call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, October 6, 2025, 7 o'clock PM. Ms. DuPont, will you please call the roll? Sure. Bowen?
Here.
Crowley?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Houseman? Rotundo?
Yeah.
Spang?
Here.
St. Hilaire?
Here.
Sweeney?
Here.
Flowers? Here. Thank you, Ms. DuPont. Councilor Crowley, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilor Crowley, for leading us in that Pledge of Allegiance, and thanks to those who are here in the chamber for joining us in that. I wanted to just take a moment before we move through the agenda just to acknowledge some of our city staff who are here with us this evening. We have Dave Gelino, our purchasing agent. Thank you, Mr. Gelino, for joining us. Our city grants director, Catherine Barrett, is here with us. Thank you, Ms. Barrett, for being here. And our fire chief, Chief O'Connor, thanks for being here, chief. It's always a pleasure to have you. So let's go, then, right to that resolution. Councilor St. Hilaire, this is Order 227. Would you like? Sure, that would be great. Thank you very much, counselor.
So, good evening. I'm here to present a resolution in honor of Mr. Charles Bucci's 95th birthday. Was able to be with Mr. Bucci on Saturday with his family, with the mayor, and presented this to him officially, and he couldn't be with us here tonight, but I'll read it for the viewers at home and for the record. Let me begin. Whereas the city of Beverly proudly recognizes and honors Mr. Bucci on the momentous occasion of his 95th birthday on October 4, 2025, and whereas Mr. Bucci was born on October 4, 1930, the son of Charles "Aquolina" Bucci, proprietors of a family-owned grocery store, Bucci's Market in downtown Beverly. Whereas Mr. Bucci is a proud graduate of St. John's Preparatory School, class of 1948, where he built lifelong lasting friendships and learned to wear suit coat and tie, a uniform that he continued to wear for all occasions, and he was in a tie on Saturday as well. Whereas after meeting Barbara Bain on a double date, they married on September 6, 1954, and soon became parents of six children, Cynthia, Lisa, Charles, Mary Ann, Pamela, and Amy. And whereas Mr. Bucci proudly served in the U.S. Navy and was stationed in Saudi Arabia and outside Naples, Italy. And whereas Mr. Bucci graduated with a degree in electrical engineering from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute and worked for many years in defense electronics at General Electric. And whereas Mr. Bucci picked up the 70-plus-year family tradition started by his father and then his uncle of serving as Santa Claus in Beverly's annual holiday parade. And whereas Mr. Bucci and his family are well-known for their generosity and thoughtfulness that was felt throughout the community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Michael Cahill and the Beverly City Council do hereby extend their deepest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Mr. Charles Bucci on his 95th birthday, celebrating his lifetime of contributions and the lasting legacy he has created. And be it further resolved that the resolution be entered into the official record for the Beverly, city of Beverly as a testament to Mr. Charles Bucci's extraordinary impact, and that a copy be presented to him in recognition of this historic milestone. In orders that the city clerks spread a copy of this resolution upon the city records. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor St. Hilaire, and certainly a very happy 95th birthday to Mr. Bucci, and congratulations to him and to his family. Counselor, thank you for your work to help us recognize and acknowledge that milestone. So, counselors, I would entertain a motion to approve Order 227. That's the resolution that we just heard Councilor St. Hilaire read. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries 8-0 and is officially approved. Thank you very much. Thank you again, Councilor St. Hilaire, and happy birthday, Mr. Bucci, if you're watching. As I mentioned at the top of our meeting, Mayor Cahill and his team were set to be here this evening. They are prepared to present. This is the regularly quarterly updates that the council has requested from the administration. As you can see, the agenda has a bit of a misunderstanding where it explains that this would have been a City Hall renovation update. So today, earlier today, the mayor and I spoke with our city solicitor, Bethel Mixon, as well, and decided that in the best interest of the public, to ensure that anybody looking at our agenda could reasonably anticipate what would be discussed, that we would do best to have the mayor and his team back on the 20th at our next regular meeting so that we could make it more clear that this update is a regular quarterly update that would encompass a broad array of city updates and projects, and not just the City Hall renovation project. So that is why we do not have a presentation this evening. It was my opinion that this agenda did not do a thorough enough job to make sure that the general public could have anticipated more than City Hall would be discussed this evening. And I think it important that we make sure that people can follow our agendas easily. So with that, I would now entertain a motion. As I mentioned, we have guests here in the chamber with us from Beverly Little League, and we're so glad to have you. I would entertain a motion, counselors, to take our agenda out of order so that we could take up Order 237. This is a letter that Counselor Sweeney filed on behalf of the council or Beverly Little League's time capsule that's being put together. And in the interest of not keeping our Little League players here with us all evening, I'd love to entertain a motion to take that out of order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that carries 8-0. So we will go out of order now on the agenda. Counselor Sweeney, I'd invite you to go to the podium, if you like, and read the letter that is numbered Order 237. That is our proposed letter for Beverly Little League's time capsule.
All right, thank you, Madam President. I want to start by thanking the representatives of Beverly Little League that we have here, coaches and members of the Beverly Little League Board, as well as parents, players, and Beverly Little League alumni. I see Mr. Rich Donlin here, too. So it's great to have a group here. Just a little bit of context about this letter. So Shane Fisher of the Beverly Little League Board had reached out to me over the summer to note that they are putting a time capsule together to commemorate the 75th anniversary of Beverly Little League, which was the season that just took place. And the time capsule will be opened, I believe it's June 11 is the date, in 2050, when the city is celebrating its 100th anniversary of Beverly Little League. And so part of that, what Mr. Fisher thought would be nice was to include a letter from all of us to our counterparts in 2050. And he gave me some great ideas to get it started. And with that, I put the following letter together that I hope we will be able to vote to approve and include in the time capsule, which is being generously provided by Historic Beverly, and I believe it will be buried next month in November. So here's the letter. To the Beverly City Council of 2050, warm greetings from the Beverly City Council of 2025. As you open this time capsule at Harry Ballfield, we hope you feel the same pride and optimism for our city that we do today. We write to celebrate a legacy that has shaped generations. Beverly Little League, the first chartered Little League in Massachusetts. Since its founding on June 11, 1950, Beverly Little League has been a cornerstone of youth development and community spirit. In its 75th season, over 130 volunteers supported nearly 440 players across 38 teams, a testament to the power of civic engagement. Several city councilors have children playing in the league, serve as coaches, or both. We hope your city council continues to champion Beverly's youth sports and the volunteers who make them thrive. In 2025, we're focused on building a more sustainable, affordable, welcoming, and resilient Beverly. From improving infrastructure and coastal resiliency to expanding civic engagement and modernizing public spaces, we aim to create a city that future generations will be proud to call home. We also face challenges, especially financial constraints that make it difficult to maintain high-quality services. But Beverly's resilience runs deep, and we trust your city council shares the same spirit of determination and resourcefulness that has guided ours. Serving as a Beverly City counselor also comes with its share of joyful moments. One unforgettable highlight came earlier this year when we voted to name Pepe the Horse as the official mascot of Rouse Side. And I know that's a meeting that President Flowers remembers very well.
What's the highlight?
This special meeting in May was one of the most well-attended of the year. Pepe has brought joy to children and plenty of adults across Beverly. And moments like these remind us how fortunate we are to live in a city with such a strong sense of community. As we look toward 2050, we wonder, has artificial intelligence transformed city services? Is the MBTA's commuter rail electrified? Are we still the nation's hottest zip code? How has sea level rise impacted Lynch Park? Were the Hall-Wittaker and Kernwood Bridges finally rebuilt? And I hope, for Council Rotundo's sake, that they were. Whatever the future holds, we trust you are leading with vision, integrity, and care. As you mark 100 years since the first game at Bessie Baker Park, we hope civic pride in Beverly Little League is just as strong as it is in 2025. May this tradition continue to inspire pride across generations of Beverly residents. With respect and hope, the Beverly City Council of 2025. With that, before we take a vote, I'd love to extend an invitation to some of our representatives of Beverly Little League to talk a little more about the time capsule that they put together.
Thank you very much, Counselor Sweeney, and thank you very much to some of our Beverly Little League representatives who are here with us this evening.
I'm Shane Fisher. I'm the information and engagement officer for the 2025-2026 Board. I'm with?
Matt Mariano, president, Beverly Little League.
And I appreciate all councilors taking this into consideration. The time capsule is a cute, started off as a cute idea, but it really showed through a lot of the conversations we had over the past year, getting to meet original alumni, those that played on the fields that didn't have grass on them. It was all dirt, maybe one baseball. And I really appreciate and value our friendship with Rich Donlin. And I appreciate the time with everyone today in consideration, celebrating 75 years. And I joined Beverly, I came to Beverly 10 years ago. Had no idea we were the original 75th, and I found out about a year ago. And I said, how does no one, how does no one know this? So this is just one of many things we did over the past year, and we're going to capture a lot of memories. And hopefully, we're all here happy, healthy, and we're, we could celebrate again at the, at the 100th.
Hopefully, we'll still be around for that.
Yep.
I just wanted to point out that Shane, he, that was a Herculean effort that he gave in order to put this 75th year anniversary together for everyone. He brought a lot of families, community sponsors together that kind of weaned off away from, from the league. We had our first parade in, I don't know how many years. We walked down the street. It was beautiful. We had music, and the fields were packed full of families and a lot of great, just synergy throughout the community. Everybody was there represented, and it was just, it was a great effort, the whole season, from beginning to end, and.
And that mascot made it the whole parade.
But again, I wish Shane had an excellent effort. Beverly Little League is lucky to have him. The city of Beverly is lucky to have him. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Fisher, Mr. Mariano. Thank you, Counselor Sweeney, for drafting this letter for our consideration. Counselors, I would entertain a motion to approve Order 237. This is the letter to the future city council in 2050. Is there any further discussion, comments, or questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That carries 8-0, so that is officially approved. We will get a fancy and much more official copy of the letter with our signatures on it, ready for Beverly Little League to be able to seal up in that time capsule. But certainly, Counselor Sweeney, thank you for your work on this. And I think Counselor Sweeney has summed up well and speaks for many of us and speaks for folks across the community. Just saying thank you to all the Beverly Little League volunteers. Congratulations to the players. Thank you to the alums who have kept that tradition really strong. I know there are several of us up here with connections to Beverly Little League and probably a lot of warm feelings, and in my case, a lot of nostalgia. I have an aged-out Little League alum, but I certainly can say that Beverly Little League gave him a tremendous foundation, not just for baseball, but for what it is to be part of a community. And so if we, I speak for all of us and in Counselor Sweeney does, just saying that we really do appreciate and celebrate with you. Counselors, I would entertain a motion to take a five-minute recess so that we could have pictures or greet the Beverly Little League players and their families if they would like. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll take a recess, and we will be back. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. And I'll call the full council back from that recess. Thank you again, Councilor Sweeney, for drafting that letter on our behalf to a future city council. It'd be fun to see that get opened up in a time capsule when we get to 2050. And thank you to the Beverly Little League community for being here. And for those who weren't able to be here tonight, we know it's hard on a school night. Congratulations on great seasons, and thank you so much. So we will go now to our public comment. These are public comment spots that are available at all of our regular meetings. They can be signed up for by contacting the clerk's office no later than 9:30 the morning of a regular meeting. They are first come, first served. And there are speaker spots that are for three minutes for each speaker. Today, we have two folks who are signed up to speak. And so we'll begin with Mr. Elliot Margolis. Mr. Margolis, I'll invite you to come to the podium. If you would, begin with your name and address for the record. And then Vice President Crowley is our timekeeper, so he will begin the time. And when you hear his timer, go off if you would just draw your remarks to a close at that point. And thank you very much.
Okay, Elliot Margolis, Six Cobblers Lane. First, I want to mention Matt. Thank you for bringing up Charlie Bucci. I remember him from when I was younger than you. And a nice guy. And Brendan, thanks for reminding me how old I am because the Little League started when I was born. So thanks a lot for that. Okay, now let's get to real business. I have a water meter issue. I know the city has a water meter issue. About a year ago, I got a bill for $420. I've had my house for about 45 years. The most I've ever paid is about $150. Okay? I think that's a little bit excessive, so I came down to City Hall and asked for the meter to be checked. That was refused. They said they don't have the time to come and check it. I said to them, you know, I'm not going to pay a $420 bill when it's normally $150. They said, well, you probably have a leak. If I had a leak of that much money flowing around, I'd know it. Then they said, well, you had a toilet running. If I had a toilet running, I'd have heard it. So I don't buy that for any minute. So I asked, until we get this straightened out, I will pay only what I usually pay. And I'll pay always the current bills. And I asked not to have any interest. They said, no, if you don't pay the bill, you're going to pay interest. So then I protested the bill, of course, and because that was refused. I kept paying what I thought I should pay. But they wouldn't even come down to look. They said, pay the bill. If we find something wrong, we'll credit you. Well, how are you going to find something wrong if you won't come down? Okay? So finally, after five months, somebody comes down. And she says to me, go turn on the water. I turn on the water. She says, shut it off. I shut it off. Nope, the meter's working. No kidding. The meter had to have been working at some point because I keep getting bills. And the second bill after the $420 was back to the $150. So there's something missing there. Now, you know what my bill is now? Including the rubbish and including the sewer, the last two bills were in the $60 range. So you've got to believe there's something wrong with the meter. I'm not here to cheat the city out of money. But you know, what's fear is fear. Every machine has hiccups. That's all I'm saying. Now, I've written to the council, so you probably all know the story anyhow. I heard back from Matt and Brendan and Todd. And Hannah and I had coffee when she did a show with me. So, you know, they gave me some advice on who to talk to here. It's the same story, as I mentioned before. The story was the same. A toilet was running or I had a leak. And, you know, the biggest problem is my wife passed away close to two years ago. There's only one person living in the house. So if there's one person living in the house, how do you go from $150 to $420? I can't figure that out. So I'm just kind of upset about the fact that I had... The city didn't want to work with me. I even went to the mayor's office, and of course, the mayor wasn't in. But after a couple of weeks, I got a meaningless response from the mayor, and there was nothing that he could do.
Mr. Margolis, I just need to ask you to draw your remarks to a close because we have to just keep it to three minutes for everybody.
Well, as luck would have it, you lucky people, I have copies for everybody.
Perfect, thank you.
But can I just say one thing? It took five months for them to come down. It's been almost a year, and I get three minutes. That doesn't sound fear to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Margolis. And if you have written comments, that's wonderful. If you would give them to Ms. Dupont, she'll make sure that we all get them, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Margolis. And we do have a second speaker signed up, Kelsey Littka, who may not... May or may not be here. Okay, it looks like Ms. Littka may not be here this evening. So thank you very much to Mr. Margolis. And thank you for your patience, too, and our flexibility in our meeting agenda. One thing that I usually say at the beginning of that time, too, that I didn't is, you know, we always appreciate having folks come and give their public comment. You won't hear councilors, there's not question and answer or conversation back and forth at this particular juncture, but it doesn't mean that councilors are not hearing what you're saying and informed by it. But I usually start by saying that, so it's a little more understandable why there's not conversation that follows. So thank you, Mr. Margolis, for being here. We do have a 7:30 public hearing posted, and we are right about at 7:30. So I will open that 7:30 hearing on Order 212. Ms. Dupont?
Order 212, the City of Beverly ordered that the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, October 6th, 2025, at 7:30 p.m. at 191 Cabot Street, third floor, council chambers, relative to National Grid petition number 31132319 to install one J.O. pole and underground laterals, cables, and wires on West Dane Street. This was published on Friday, September 19th, in the newspaper.
Thank you, Ms. Dupont. Do we have National Grid representative? Excellent, thank you. I'll invite you to come to the podium if you would. And if there's anything that you'd like to start off by saying or offering as by way of information about this National Grid petition, 31132319.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ismail Miku, 44 River Street, Beverly. I'm here representing National Grid. I'm here to represent for the petition of 52 West Dane Street in Beverly for installing a joint ownership pole with Verizon at 54 Dane Street, Beverly. The pole will be a 40-foot Class III pole with three cans transformers on the top. It will be at the end of Dane Street, so it's a dead end. And thankfully, no traffic will be affected that day. And our team will take them about six to eight hours that day to complete the job.
Thank you very much. Counselors, are there any questions on this public hearing? Questions or comments? Councilor Bowen?
Thank you. Just to say, we sent a few questions from the Public Services Committee ahead of this public hearing just to know what we were working on. And one of the questions was about whether there would be any accompanying underground work because there's a standard boilerplate in their requests that includes that. And the team had confirmed that there would not. It's just the pole, and even though there's a pole right next to it, it's a new level of service.
Thank you very much, Councilor Bowen, and thanks to Subcommittee on Public Services for doing that work ahead for us as well.
Thank you.
Counselors, are there other questions or comments? Counselor Spang, please.
Yes. On the plans that shows the existing pole, is that pole going to stay or will it become redundant and come out?
Yes, that pole, pole number 917, will stay. This one also has three can transformers, but this one is 120 to 8 volts. It's serving one business, and the new business needs 277 for 80 volts, which unfortunately, we cannot make three cans use both. So we will have to install a new pole with new cans.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors, any other questions or comments? There are no members of the public signed up to speak in this public hearing on the sign-up sheet, but just to make sure, were there any members of the public who wish to speak in this public hearing specifically on this National Grid petition for a jointly owned pole on West Dane Street? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. We'll refer that back to the Subcommittee on Public Services for further action this evening. And we do have a little window of time here before our 7:40 public hearing. So if you want to sit and wait, and then I'll call you back up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Dupont, let's take care of some business between that time and now. We do have a set of meeting minutes that we can accept from a previous meeting. This is minutes from our Finance and Property Committee meeting from June 11th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve that set of minutes? All those in favor? Thank you. Carries eight zero. Good job, left end of the table. Everybody was very excited to motion and second those minutes. Thank you. Let's go to Communications from His Honor, the Mayor, please, Ms. Dupont.
Sure. Order number 228, a grant for $24,600 from the Mass Cultural Council to support Beverly's local cultural council.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number 229, a $7,500 Title III B grant from Senior Care to support the Council on Aging's outreach program.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property as well.
Order number 230, a lease agreement with T-Mobile Northeast LLC.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order 231, a $1,537,311 National Urban Search and Rescue Response System grant from the United States Department of Homeland Security and FEMA to support the Massachusetts Task Force One site in Beverly.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number 232, a $251,119.90 grant from the United States Department of Homeland Security/FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grants Program for the fire department to be used to obtain 70 sets of wildfire personal protective equipment, and online and in-person training is included in this grant.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property as well.
Order number 233, an appointment for Naveo Horrigan, 33 Sunset Drive, to serve on the Commission on Disabilities.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order number 234, an appointment for Allison Dudley, 7 Beckford Street, to serve on the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services as well.
An appointment... Excuse me. Order 235, an appointment for Benjamin Roy, 12 Arlington Avenue, to serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Let's go to Communications from other city officers and boards, please, Ms. Dupont.
This is order number 236 from City Clerk Lisa Kent, and it is an election warrant for the November 4th, 2025 biennial municipal election.
Counselors, we can approve this on the floor. I would entertain a motion to approve this order from the clerk. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? That carries eight zero, thank you. We've done Order 237 from Councilor Sweeney, so we will move past that one. Thank you again, Councilor Sweeney, for your work on that.
Order number 238, fiscal year 2026, proposed CPA budget.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property to set a public hearing. Let's go to Communications, Applications, and Petitions, please, Ms. Dupont.
Order number 239, petition number 31133424 from National Grid to install underground facilities on Hale Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services to set a public hearing.
Order number 240 from the Department of Utilities, a notice of filing, public hearing, and request for comments.
Counselors, I would entertain a motion to receive this and place it on file. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries eight zero, so we'll receive that order and place it on fire... On file? Not on fire? That would be less good, but we do have the fire chief here, so I suppose we're well protected. Thank you, Chief O'Connor. We do have one item under unfinished business from a previous meeting. This is Order 163. This is a proposed amendment, Chapter 69, Article II, Section 69-9, City Personnel Sick Leave. We'll continue to hold this here. We were waiting for further information on this, so we'll take no action on that this evening. We will go to... Let's go to motions and orders. I think we could probably do 206 for a final vote, and then we'll go to our public hearing posted for 7:40. Ms. Dupont, this is a second reading, final vote on Order 206.
Order number 206, a proposed amendment to A. Check. 270-49 Off-Street Parking, Handicapped Parking. In Section C, Handicapped Parking, in the following locations, spaces shall be reserved for handicap parking. Atlantic Street South at approximately 25 and 1/2 Atlantic Street, Orchard Street East at approximately 17 Orchard Street. And this was published in the newspaper on Friday, September 19th, 2025.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dupont. Counselor Spang, you and Counselor Housman had proposed this ordinance change. Anything that you'd like to say at this time?
I'll just echo the thanks to Sergeant Nicholson for helping... And the Solicitor's Office for helping us get these filed.
Thank you very much, Counselor, and thanks to you and Counselor Housman for your work on this. As I mentioned, Counselors, this is for a final vote and potential passage this evening. Is there a motion to approve Order 206? Any further discussion? All those in favor? That carries eight zero, so that is approved. Thank you very much. And that brings us to our 7:40 public hearing. So we will open that 7:40 hearing. This is on Order 224. Ms. Dupont?
Order number 224, City of Beverly ordered that the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, October 6th, 2025, at 7:40 p.m. at 191 Cabot Street, third floor, council chambers, relative to National Grid petition number 31175552 to install underground facilities on Cliff Street. And this was published in the newspaper on Friday, September 19th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dupont. I'll invite our National Grid representative here this evening to come back to the podium. And anything that you'd like to say about this petition, number 31175552, on Cliff Street?
Good evening, Ismail Miku, 44 River Street, Beverly. I'm here today to petition for 40 Cliff Street in Beverly, petition for trenching, five feet trench from Pole 3760 to the property of 40 Cliff Street. This trench will be through the sidewalk, public sidewalk. We need to install... To service the customer underground for this property. So we will have to trench five feet from the pole to their property. It will take between four and six hours to complete. And then our customer will have to run one three inches PVC pipe to their property. And of course, the sidewalk will be completely restored and made new at the end of the job.
Thank you very much. Counselors, are there any questions or comments for discussion on this one? Counselor Spang?
Yes, I just wanted to point out that Cliff Street and that corner is going to be repaved. So I know you mentioned that the work will be in the sidewalk, but just to make sure that it's not in the roadway because they're going to be repaving that in the next couple of weeks.
Of course, so we will have the pavement. And next to it, we have the pole, which is already on the sidewalk. And from the sidewalk to the private property will be the trenching.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there other comments or questions from members of the council on this National Grid petition? Okay. There are no members of the public signed up on the sign-in sheet for this public hearing, but to be sure, were there any members of the public who wish to speak in this public hearing? This is on Order 224, the National Grid petition that we just heard concerning underground facilities on Cliff Street. Okay, seeing none? I'll close that public hearing and refer that back to the Committee on Public Services for further action this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Before we take a break for some Subcommittee work, Counselors, let's go back to motions and orders. And we have Order 220. This is a proposed ordinance change. This is for a first reading and a first vote this evening. Ms. Dupont, please.
Order number 220, be it ordered that the City of Beverly and the City Council, as follows, Chapter 270, Section 270-25B, stop intersection is amended as follows. Removing stop signs from the following locations. 1. Kernwood Avenue, North and South, at the intersection of Harris Avenue. 2. McPherson Drive, South, at intersection of Federal Street. 3. River Street, North, at intersection of Federal Street. The full text of Order Number 220 can be found at the City Clerk's Office, 191 Cabot Street, Beverly, MA, Monday to Wednesday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Thursday from 8:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., and Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. And it's also available online at www.beverlyma.gov. This was published in the newspaper on Friday, September 19th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dupont. Counselor Rotendo and Counselor Crowley, you had filed this proposed ordinance change. Is there anything that you'd like to say at this time?
I do. I just want to specific... You want to go first? Obviously, the one at Harrison and Kernwood is in response to the light signal going live in the next week or two. But the one specifically on McPherson and Federal Street, that one there, I travel probably at least a dozen times a day. And what I did, one of the reasons why, knowing that the traffic signal is going to go live sometime next year. I know some of the concerns was the traffic coming on Federal, taking a right or left onto McPherson or River Street. Observing going at many different times of the day, there's not a lot of traffic coming underneath that railroad train bridge. But as well as even tonight at Rush Hour, what I've noticed is a lot of the Massachusetts rolling stops. So they think this was helpful, alleviate just cars going through them without having to have that rolling stop. So I think it really is a justifiable removal of this sign, even though the light signal isn't in there. I had not really seen a lot of traffic being disrupted with the concerns of them being able to get in while traffic is going through.
Thank you, Counselor Rotendo. Counselor Crowley, anything that you'd like to add?
Thank you, Counselor Spang. I just wanted to mention that I have had people reach out to me with concerns about kids going to the McPherson Youth Center once it reopens. And especially by bicycle who travel down Federal Street from downtown. So I was debating whether to offer a friendly amendment that would allow the Public Services Department, at Commissioner Collins' discretion, to postpone removing the stop signs on McPherson Drive and River Street until Mast dot fully activates the traffic light at River and Bridge Street. Because I've heard conflicting estimates on when that would happen. The longest would be that it did not go live and activated until the temporary bridge is in place. So that's... I don't know if you'd be open to the friendly amendment.
I know Parking and Traffic had mentioned putting additional signage specifically to do with the crosswalks there. There is little less vehicular traffic. The McPherson Center, look, we don't even know if that's going to open until January or February, so that is going to maybe fall within the timeline of it. I still feel strongly that it's best for the flow of traffic that's being affected on Elliott Street and as well as on McPherson. I mean, this is something that I had brought up a few years ago when it was still sort of part of Ward 1. And what was told me is, let's wait a little bit to see how traffic flow is. We know that the Cowwash Margie Street, which turns to Federal, that no longer is going to have any vehicular traffic because even turning out, there'll be a roadblock there with the bridge work happening in the next... Actually, today, I think they're starting. They'll start putting erosion control and stuff like that. So I still think that it's justified to do it, even if it were to wait. I don't see what the purpose of waiting that long. There is crosswalks there. I know Parking and Traffic has instructed the Highway Division to put additional signage to notify of the crosswalks that are there right now, the four-way crosswalks, or the three-way crosswalk.
Thank you. Let's do this. Let's get a motion and a second on the main order. And then we could have further discussion. Also, Counselor Spang, if you do want to propose an amendment, you can do it at that point as well. I also do have the letter that was sent to us by Parking and Traffic to add to the order. I will also read it aloud. We have a motion in a second, just so that those who are with us can hear it. So is there a motion? And or... Well, we'll start with the motion. Is there a motion to approve Order 220? Thank you. So we can have further discussion at this point, but maybe it would be helpful. I will read the letter that we received. Planning Director Darlene Nguyen sent this to our attention. It is from Chair of Parking and Traffic, Mr. Richard Benevento. And this will be attached to the main order. So this says, Dear Honorable Counsel, at the request of City Councilor Todd Rotendo and City Councilor Steve Crowley, Parking and Traffic Commission discussed matters regarding the request to remove stop signs at two locations in Beverly, Kernwood Ave. and Harris Street, and McPherson Drive, River Street, at Federal Street. The Commission discussed this at their meeting, sorry, on September 9th, 2025, and heard comments from both City Councilors and Commission members. There were no members of the public who spoke on these matters. Members not present to vote were DPS Commissioner Michael Collins and Chamber Representative Dana Morton. Kernwood Avenue and Harris Street. After further discussion, the Commission voted 6-0 to recommend the City Council amend Ordinance 27025, Section B, to remove stop signs on Kernwood Avenue at both the northbound and southbound approaches, north and south directions, at their intersection with Harris Street. Stop signs shall remain in place on Harris Street. McPherson Drive, River Street, and Federal Street. After further discussion, the Commission voted 6-0 to recommend the City Council amend Ordinance 27025, Section B, to remove stop signs on McPherson Drive, southbound, and River Street, northbound, at their intersection with Federal Street, subject to the following conditions. One, that the pedestrian crosswalks across McPherson Drive and River Street will remain in place with new fluorescent yellow pedestrian crossing warning signs installed in advance of the intersection. And two, that any additional warning signs be installed as needed, whether temporary or permanent, subject to the determination of the Department of Public Services. Please feel free to contact me or Planning Director Darlene Nguyen if you have questions regarding the Commission's discussion. Respectfully, Richard Benevento, Chairman. So Ms. Dupont will attach that to the main order. Thank you, Ms. Dupont. We do have a motion and a second. So is there further discussion? Or Counselor Spang, if you would like to make an amendment, you can do so at this point.
I'll move for a friendly amendment that the Public Services Department, at Commissioner Collins' discretion, is allowed to postpone removing the stop signs on McPherson Drive and River Street until after Mast dot fully activates the traffic light at the River and Bridge Street intersection.
So Counselor Spang has made a motion for an amendment. Is there a second on that motion? Second. So is there further discussion? We will take up the amendment itself, and then we'll return to the main order. We have a motion and a second on Counselor Spang's amendment. Is there further discussion or questions or comments on this? Counselor Stangler?
Yes, I just had a question, just trying to follow along the back and forth. Did the Traffic in Parking Commission entertain your amendment, Counselor Spang? Just curious if that came up in the discussion?
They did. It came up in the discussion, and they decided to not go forward with that recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam President. I certainly understand why you would offer up an amendment as so. I certainly understand why you would offer up an amendment as so, Councillor Spang. I too drive that intersection fairly frequently as a Federal Street resident. In the absence of the conditions that Parking and Traffic outlined, I would be more inclined to vote in favor of the amendment, to make sure that there are some safeguards in place for children trying to get over to the McPherson Center, especially before there is a fully functioning light. I'm less concerned about the need for your amendment if these conditions are followed. And so the question I would have to whoever could answer it here, do we need to vote to codify the conditions of the parking and, the recommendations of the Parking and Traffic Commission to make sure that there is a follow-up? Because I know in the past, Public Services has been hesitant to install the fluorescent signs that are more notable for pedestrians. And I would feel comfortable voting for the recommendation as is, with some assurance that those signs will be installed. So that would, that would be the only concern I'd have in voting against Councillor Spang's amendment if there aren't those pedestrian safeguards installed once those stop signs are taken away.
Thank you, Councillor Sweeney.
It looks, it looks like Councillor Rotendo made the answer.
Madam President, in response to, through you, to Councillor Sweeney, Mr. Targnazi, who's in charge of those signs, has been very responsive and proactively actually putting additional signage up since he's taken the foreman's position. He has a different view, more in line of what we've been talking about. I can speak specifically to Kernwood Ave., which never had any of those identified signs. Soon as he came on, he immediately put them on there. He as well as assured that those type of signs will be installed. I did talk to Commissioner Collins, even though he wasn't at that meeting that day, and asked his opinion just before going forward with it. He didn't have any concerns with that, stop signs being removed as well. So I did get his opinion on it as well.
Thank you, councillor. Second, Councillor Sweeney. Are you set for the moment?
That's fine with me. You know, I trust the team we've got in the city, and as long as those precautionary measures are put in place, I'm less concerned about the removal of the stop signs. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bowen, and then Councillor Feldman, I see your hand as well. Councillor Bowen.
Thank you. I have the same question, and I think would be most comfortable if we do add those conditions to what we're approving to our vote. I think that would be a separate amendment, but given that there is strong willingness to put up those signs, you know, I think I too would be comfortable with the change happening sooner. But I do just want to say, I think the hesitancy is because without either stop signs or a light, there really won't be anything on that long, straight stretch to slow people down naturally. And, you know, I think the two things that that raises for me are pedestrian access, because I mostly access that intersection on foot, and it's, you don't even really have four fully functional crosswalks, so you kind of have to figure out how you're going to get across if you're going both ways. But with people stopping at the stop signs, it's much safer for a pedestrian. If they don't have any signal to slow down, that will be challenging. And the other piece is people making the left turn onto Federal Street from McPherson often get their chance to go because the oncoming traffic stops with no brakes in traffic, that may still back up all the way to Elliot Street. So I think it's worth trying some things to relieve the traffic impacts of the bridge closures, and this is a reasonable one to try. I just want to voice, like, that's, for me, where some of the concerns come from, and I think would like us to be open to, if these come down, the pedestrian signs go up, and we're still seeing traffic impacts from either people making that turn or excessive speeding, that the council will just keep an eye on that, that Parking and Traffic keep an eye on that, and consider other measures to address it if the original issue doesn't go away or new issues come up as a result.
Thank you, Councillor Bowen. On a practical matter, I do agree with you that putting those conditions in here would be a separate amendment, which someone could make. I know that Councillor Rotendo and Councillor Spang both would like to get back in here. Councillor Feldman, you did have your hand up. Would you like to jump in before we go back?
Just a brief clarifying question, and apologies if I just misunderstood. Is the friendly amendment saying that at the purview of Commissioner Collins, or, and then, but it's also, if it's at his purview and he seems to have approved it as is with taking them down, is this kind of a moot point? Because it's going to be kind of, I just, I'm just trying to follow, like, if this is all for, you know, somebody to not be agreeing with the delay anyway. I just am curious if anyone could answer that, so.
Councillor Spang, is your amendment, so we'll go to you, and then Councillor Rotendo, you as well.
I was going to say, I'm okay, I'm okay withdrawing that amendment and instead, a motion to amend to incorporate the two conditions from the September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five letter from the Parking and Traffic Commission instead.
So Councillor Spang is withdrawing the original motion and has a motion then to, thank you, we've got a motion to second, thank you, Councillor Rotendo, to insert the conditions from the September fifteenth letter. Councillor Rotendo, you did have your hand up. I'd like to go back.
That was one of the things to suggest, but the other thing, just to address the comment by Councillor Bowen in regards to the crossings, Rantoul Street is a speedway as well, and we have a lot of crosswalks there that are, you know, it's rarely pedestrian safety. So we have similar natures on both streets and many streets like that. So although we may be removing the stop signs, there were stop signs, I don't know necessarily at Rantoul. And the stop signs, when those were placed, were in place for vehicular traffic, it wasn't for the pedestrians. It was twenty years ago when it was put. I was in the city at that time, and I know that was one of the reasons, was because there was too much challenges with the traffic. Since that street is being closed now, that's less of a challenge or obstacle.
Thank you, councillor. So we have now a motion and a second on an amendment to the main order, Order two twenty, which would be to add the two conditions, to amend the order to add the two conditions from the September fifteenth Parking and Traffic meeting. They are specifically recommendations pertaining to the McPherson Drive, River, and Federal Street intersection. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that amendment? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Okay, that amendment carries eight zero, which brings us back to the main order. We do have a motion to second on the main order. It would now be as amended. Is there any further discussion on Order two twenty as amended at this time? Okay. So again, this is for a first vote. It will be available for final, a second reading and final passage at our regular meeting on the twentieth, and that will now be the, assuming that we vote in favor now, it will be on the ordinance as amended with those conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries eight zero for its first vote. Thank you very much. Thank you, Councillors Rotendo and Crowley. Thank you, Councillor Spang. And thank you, councillors, for the discussion on this. I feel like this has been really good process to work through together, and I appreciate that. We can now take a break for some subcommittee work, so I would entertain a motion to do just that. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries eight zero. We'll take a brief break. This is a subcommittee break, so about fifteen minutes. A reminder that regular subcommittee meetings can be scheduled on the off weeks if we have further matters to take up. Let's have Finance and Property here in the chamber, Public Services in the committee room, and Legal Affairs in the hall, please.
Good evening, everybody. We have a few items that were referred to us tonight on our agenda. I think I'll start with the easy one, Order two thirty-eight. This is the public hearing that we need to set on the proposed FY twenty-six CPA budget. So I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing on October twentieth at eight PM. So moved.
Second.
Comments or discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye, approved, three to zero. Thank you. Ms. Barrett, you're here tonight. We have several grants. We'll take them in order, if that's all right. Order two twenty-eight, this is a twenty-four thousand dollar grant for the Mass Cultural Council to support Beverly's local cultural council. Tell us about this one.
Thank you. This is the annual grant that we get from the Mass Cultural Council to support the local cultural council, twenty-four thousand six hundred. I believe it was the exact same amount last year. And I just want to thank Martha Lewis, because she's the financial manager for all of the invoices and grant reimbursements that come in on behalf of the local cultural council. I don't know if a lot of people know that she does that role, and it's very helpful. So, yeah.
Questions or comments?
I just had a question. What does this money go to, do you know?
The local cultural council gives out annual grants. Their cycle is open, actually, right now. The grants range from about five hundred to a thousand, and they support all kinds of artists and creative types of projects and endeavors. I know when I was PTO president at Hannah School, we used to apply for a grant each year called Crazy Chemistry. It was a two-hundred-dollar program, but it helps all types of different creative and arts-related, science STEM throughout the city. You just have to be a nonprofit. So, yeah, it makes a big difference, that money.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. I'd entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is approved, three to zero. Next, we'll take up Order two twenty-nine. This is a seventy-five-hundred-dollar grant, a Title III B grant, from Senior Care to support the Council on Aging's outreach program.
Yes, this is an annual grant that we get, Title III B from Senior Care. It's federal funding. Last year, you might recall, it was four thousand dollars higher. We are seeing some lower amounts from some federal funding sources, or entire amounts being eliminated. So we're grateful to get this money for the outreach program at the Senior Center. It helps with Meals on Wheels and some critical programs that they run for our senior citizens. And I just want to thank Chris Gomez-Farwell for this grant. I believe he's been with us now for two and a half years, and he's done an amazing job at the Senior, at the Council on Aging, so.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Barrett. Any questions or comments? Councillor Sweeney?
Just one, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On that last point, Ms. Barrett, about the reduction in funding, is there an anticipation that this is going to impact some of our outreach services? Or is the, is there funding in the city portion of the budget for the Senior Center to make sure we're maintaining the same level of outreach?
Yes. We're going to maintain the same level of services, and I don't see a negative impact from the reduction in the amount. The year before last, we got seventy-five hundred, so we're just kind of reverting to that level. But I don't think any services will be, you know, diminished because of it.
I'm glad to hear that, and thank you for that. I know these are very important services that the Senior Center provides, so it's important that we maintain them. I'm glad to hear that'll be the case. Thank you.
Yeah, they do a great job at the Senior Center, everybody there, so.
Okay.
They have salsa lessons coming up, so if you want to.
Excellent.
Partake in those. I think it's about two weeks away. They have a lot of exciting events for Hispanic Heritage Month.
If you need lessons.
Yeah.
It's probably for everybody's benefit that I don't participate, but I appreciate the offer.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to approve Order two twenty-nine. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved, three to zero. Moving right along, Order two thirty-one. This is a one-point-five-million-dollar National Urban Search and Rescue Response System grant from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security.
Yes. So this is also an annual federal grant, and it supports Mass Task Force One, which is based in Beverly. It's the only task force in New England out of all six states, and I don't know if you recall, but back on nine eleven, I believe they were the first task force to respond to nine eleven. It's critical for emergency preparedness, and I was a little bit concerned about this grant and some of our other larger federal grants being cut or reduced, and fortunately, this one was not. So thanks to Janice Corkum, who manages that grant now. Before that, it was Anita Arnem and Mark Foster, and they do a phenomenal job there, and they respond to all kinds of emergencies in New England and abroad, I mean, not abroad, across the United States. Hurricanes, fires, mudslides, you know, you name it, they respond, so.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Any questions or comments? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve Order two thirty-one. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is approved. And last on our agenda tonight is Order two thirty-two. It's another grant, two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-nineteen dollars, U.S. Department of Homeland Security Firefighters Assistance Program. Let's see, we have Chief O'Connor with us tonight. Thank Chief for being here. Looks like there's a match on this one as well, Ms. Barrett.
Yes.
So tell us, Chief O'Connor, what you use this for?
This is for wildland firefighting. It's for both training and equipment. So if you can imagine right now, we're primarily a structural firefighting department. All of our gear is geared towards structural firefighting, with a little bit of climate change and some issues that are going on. Everybody remembers what happened last year with our response. We spend a lot of time fighting fires, a little bit in Beverly, but a lot outside of Beverly. We still have a lot of woods here in Beverly. This project is going to provide us with some training on wildland firefighting, completely different from structural firefighting. But it's also going to equip all of our firefighters with actual wildland firefighting gear. We don't want our firefighters wearing structural gear out in the woods. It's a hazard. It's designed for a completely different environment. So this will provide from top to bottom, boots to helmets and everything in between, get our firefighters the gear they need to be working in the woods. Total project's about two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars. Two-hundred-and-fifty-one of that is coming from the federal government. I have two fiscal years, and I'll be stretching my cost share through. And I think that's probably about it. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Collins?
I'll just make a comment, Mr. Chairman. You know, my work in the town of Oxford, that was where some of the fires were, Middleton right next door, and I really appreciate that Beverly was able to be a player in the regional response there. So it's great that you guys are able to get the equipment that we need. Ideally, we don't see any situation like that anytime soon, but it's important to be ready, so.
We're part of statewide fire mobilization plan. We have apparatus that's part of that. This, what's really interesting is last year, that plan hadn't really been put to test in this region in decades, and we had eleven activations in one weekend.
Wow.
For that, so. And I'll just give credit to Catherine, but also Lieutenant Mike Bishop took over the grant writing for the Beverly Fire Department. He's done a phenomenal job. This was his project, he took this one on, he did a great job.
I appreciate the efforts. Thank you all.
I would say in Word six, this has definitely been a big issue, so I'm glad to see we're getting ahead of this. I would entertain a motion to approve Order two thirty-two. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that one is approved, three to zero.
Sorry, I threw off our usual pattern.
It's okay. I'm more than happy to.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think that's all we have on our agenda tonight. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Committee on Finance and Property.
Look to you for this one, Madam President.
So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I'll call the council back to order following that subcommittee break. Thank you to all of our subcommittees for your work, and we will go to reports from committees. Mr. Pott.
Order number 232, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom was referred the matter regarding a $251,119 and ninety cent grant from the United States Department of Homeland Security. FEMA Assistance to Firefighter Grant Program for the Fire Department to be used to obtain seventy sets of wildfire personal proactive equipment, and online and in-person training is included in this grant. Oh, I'm sorry. Recommend the council approve the request.
Thank you, that was very suspenseful.
My apologies.
That was very suspenseful, I like how you made us wait for a minute. The Councillors, the question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye? Carries eight zero.
Order number 231, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom was referred the matter regarding a $1,537,311 National Urban Search and Rescue Response System grant from the United States Department of Homeland Security and FEMA to support the Massachusetts Task Force One site in Beverly. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Recommend the council approve the request.
Questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Carries eight zero, thank you.
Order number 229, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom was referred the matter regarding a $7,500 Title III B grant from Senior Care to support the Council on Aging's outreach program. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Recommend the council approve the request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye? Carries eight zero.
Order number 238, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom was referred the matter regarding fiscal year 2026 proposed CPA budget. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Set a public hearing on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, at eight P. M.
Councillors, I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended by the subcommittee for our next regular meeting, October twentieth, at eight P. M. All those in favor? Carries eight zero, so we will have that public hearing at our next regular meeting.
Order number 228, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom was referred the matter regarding a grant for $24,600 for the Mass Cultural Council to support Beverly's local cultural council. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Recommend the council approve the request.
Questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye? That carries eight zero. And thank you to our city grants director, Catherine Barrett, also to Fire Chief O'Connor for being here with us throughout our subcommittee meeting to talk about those grants. Thank you.
Order number 230, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter regarding a lease agreement with T-Mobile Northeast LLC. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Recommend the council approve the request.
Are there questions or comments on this one? Councillor Bowen.
Thank you. I just had one question, and it may have been covered in committee, but I looked back at the budget line for revenue for where that, those lease payments come in from all cell tower leasing in the city. And it's a proposed decrease for this coming fiscal year, and I just wondered if there's a trend with other providers, or we're actually hoping that that line increases based on the experience renegotiating this lease.
Thank you. Mr. Jellino, thank you very much.
So, we used to have, I'm guessing, twenty years ago, maybe five or six providers on that water tank. You had Sprint, you had Nextel, you had, I forget the names of them, but several of them, and through all the mergers, we now will end up with two cell carriers on Brimble Ave and two on Folly Hill. And it's basically due to the mergers. And there's more technology, too. You'll see them doing things on the poles and, you know, small antennas, and I think you will eventually, cell phones will end, even with Starlink. I think you'll see the way that business is done will change eventually.
Councillor Bowen.
Thank you, that's helpful. So it sounds like fewer providers paying lease payments for space to the city. But overall, does it look like that revenue is going to be fairly steady based on this new negotiation, or it's going to keep going down?
No, this revenue will increase every five years. This lease will have an escalator clause in it.
Great, yeah, so I saw that in the lease. It's like three percent per year for up to twenty years if it's renewed at that level. But I'm thinking about the revenue line overall that is bundling multiple types of lease payments.
Yeah, it's hard to say, you know, what these big companies are thinking, but I, you know, I don't think we're going to see more carriers. I think like everything else, it's just the big, you know, big companies, and you're going to see a reduction in the number of competition and the number of companies out there.
Councillor Rotendo, you seem to want to get in here, so we'll let you get in.
Yeah, quickly, Mr. Jello, this is only one company. There are others that you still have to negotiate with, though, correct?
Yeah, we do have one more. We had two responses to this RFP. We did have Verizon. This is strategy behind this, that we hope to see Verizon up on the Brimble Hill tank in the future.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councillor. Are there other questions or comments on this one from Councillors? All right. Thank you, Mr. Jellino. The question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye? Carries eight zero, thank you.
Order number 217, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter regarding Michael Barone Jr., 28 Taft Avenue, to serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Recommend the council approve the reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye? That carries eight zero.
Order number 212, the Committee on Public Services, to whom was referred the matter regarding national grid petition for West Dane Street. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Recommend the petition be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye? Carries eight zero, thank you.
Order number 223, the Committee on Public Services, to whom was referred the matter regarding petition number 31113315 to install underground facilities on Tall Tree Drive. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Set a public hearing on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, at eight forty P. M.
Councillors, I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended by the subcommittee for our next regular meeting at eight forty P. M. All those in favor? Thank you, that carries eight zero, so we will have that public hearing in our next regular meeting.
Order number 224, the Committee on Public Services, to whom was referred the matter regarding petition number 31175552 to install underground facilities on Cliff Street. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Recommend the petition be granted.
Questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye? Carries eight zero, thank you.
Order number 239, the Committee on Public Services, to whom was referred the matter regarding petition number 31133424 to install underground facilities on Hale Street. Have considered said matter and beg thee to follow. Set a public hearing on, oh, excuse me, set a public hearing on October twentieth at eight thirty P. M.
I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended for October twentieth at eight thirty P. M. All those in favor? Carries eight zero, so we'll also have that public hearing in our next regular meeting. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Dupont. Thank you, everyone. Councillors, are there any announcements? Or Councillor Rotendo?
Just a reminder, the Fall Frolic is down at Lynch Park this weekend, so just to get down there. I hear Councilor Felden's going to be running it again.
Take it, you're on. Thank you, Councillor Rotendo. Councillor Bowen.
Just one scheduling announcement. The Public Services Committee is planning to schedule a meeting for the off night, October twenty-seventh, to invite national grid representatives to talk about their River Street facility and noise complaints from neighbors. We'll see if there are other items by then, but aiming for six o'clock for that meeting here in the small conference room.
Thank you very much, Councillor Bowen. Are there other announcements or reminders from Councillors? Ms. Dupont, I don't know if you'd like to take a few moments just to give an update on, I know you and Ms. Kent were traveling for Election Advocacy Day, and so we did hear about that here in the council chamber, so that we could talk about whether or not it made sense for you all to go. And so you've gone and come back. I don't know if you wanted to offer any kind of an update or any reflections?
Sure, thank you, Madam President. As you are all aware, last week, Lisa and I went to Washington, D.C. with the Projects for Election Infrastructure and the Center for Tech and Civic Life to advocate for sustained and consistent federal election funding. Congress will be considering an appropriation of about $400 million for all fifty states, and we emphasized the importance of including language that directs some of those funds directly from the Secretary of State's office down to the local level where the elections are planned, staffed, and run. While Beverly's fortunate to have a strong support and the resources we need to serve our voters well, many communities across Massachusetts operate with more limited funding. And we shared how stable, predictable funding helps local offices like ours plan three, five, or ten years ahead. It was a meaningful and impactful experience to bring Beverly's perspective to the national conversation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dupont, and thanks, thank you to you, Ms. Kent, and the team in the Clerk's Office for the work that you do to ensure that our elections run so smoothly and have great access for all of our residents and voters, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councillors, any other comments at this point? All right, well, my thanks to Kim in the BevCam booth, as always, for keeping us streaming and keeping us accessible for all of our folks who would like to follow along. Thank you to everyone who joined us this evening. Thank you to our Beverly Little League board members and coaches and families, and everybody who joined us either here or watching on BevCam. Thanks to our city staff who was here with us this evening. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? That carries eight zero. Thanks, everyone. Good night, we're adjourned.